Me, too.
Okay, councilors, reading. So, welcome, everybody, to the Oakdale City Council Meeting, November 22, 2022. Sarah, would you go do roll call, please?
Councilmember Ingberdson.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Swedberg.
Here.
Councilmember Zabel.
Here.
Mayor Ranky.
Here. Please join me now in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up on the agenda tonight is the approval of the amended agenda that we have in front of us at our at our seats. The amended agenda involves removing a consensus motion, which was priorly C. So, upon review, councilors, can I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then the amended agenda is accepted. First up, second up on the docket, then, is the approval of minutes, and we have three of them, three sets in front of us. The first from the workshop for the Oakdale City Council, November 7, 2022, the Oakdale City Council Regular Meeting, November 7, 2022, and the Special Meeting of November 16, 2022. Taking that first workshop meeting minutes first, councilors, upon review, did you see any corrections or adjustments that needed to be made? Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Those workshop meeting minutes are approved as presented. The second set, then, deals with the November 7 Oakdale City Council Meeting, it's a regular meeting. Upon review, councilors, any corrections or adjustments? Grab a motion, please.
I'm moved.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Those meeting minutes are approved as presented. Finally, we have the Special Meeting Minutes from the Oakdale City Council, November 16. Upon review, any adjustments or clarifications? Could I have a motion, then, please?
So moved.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then those meeting minutes are approved as presented, thank you. Next up on the docket are three public hearings. First one deals with the amendments to our Article III of Chapter 9 of our city code. I'm going to open it up to the public. And at this point, is there anybody in the audience who would like to comment on this matter? If you do, then our standard practice is going to be to please approach the podium, state your name and address, and share with us your thoughts. Typically, we have people spend time about three minutes. So, is there anybody in the audience who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to move it back to the dais up here. Councilors, do you have any questions or comments about it? And again, this is the amendments to Article III of Chapter 9 of the city code. This is really pertaining to the regulation of tobacco. Seeing none, grab a, we're going to close the public hearing, we brought it back up front, could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to waiving and adopt ordinance number 887 approving the amendments to Article III of Chapter 9 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Oakdale pertaining to the regulation of tobacco.
So, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then that motion passes as presented, thank you. The second public hearing deals with the intent to purchase and implement body-worn cameras. And so I'm going to open up the public hearing to comments from the audience. Again, anybody that would like to comment on this matter, please approach the podium, state your name and address, and share with us your thoughts. So, is there anybody in the audience who would like to comment on this topic? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back up front to the councilors. Councilors, any questions or comments for Chief Newton or City Administrator? Grab a motion, then, please.
Make a motion to authorize the mayor and the city administrator to sign and execute the agreement between Motorola and the City of Oakdale.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then that motion passes as presented, thank you. Finally, the third public hearing deals with the Tax Increment Financing Spending Plan. And so I'm going to open up the public, or open up, yeah, the public hearing to the audience. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to comment on this matter? This, again, is the Tax Increment Financing Spending Plan, really for districts 1 through 4 and districts 1 through 6. If there is, please come up to the podium and state your name and address, and then share with us your thoughts on the matter. If there's anybody in the audience who'd like to comment. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back up front to the councilors. Councilors, any comments or questions on this, on this matter? Could I have a motion, then, please?
Make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution number 2022-121 approving the TIF District 1-4 and 1-6 spending plan.
So, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second, is there any discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then that motion passes as presented, thank you. Next topic is our open forum. Open forum is a time when anybody that's in the audience would like to comment on anything that's going on in the city, they're welcome to do so. It's really not a time for a real in-depth discussion or back and forth, but if there's anybody in the audience who would like to comment, please approach the podium now and share with us your thoughts. Typically, we ask for three minutes, councillor, or commissioner.
I've got two, I'll try to keep three minutes apiece.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and council. So, I've been up here a couple other times in the last six years, but we have something, a tradition that was started. It's called a Commissioner's Service Award. And we typically don't give them out to anybody elected because that's, you're there to perform highly. But when you're retiring or not up for reelection and you might be moving on, then I, if I choose, I can recognize good service. So, I've got two of you, Councilwoman Sweetberg and then Mayor Ranky. So, the first one, I'll start with Kline, I'll call you Kline. I was just looking back on just the four years you've been on council, and to the services award is anyone that's done great deeds, it could be a regular citizen in the community, and to recognize him or her. But here would be a partner to make our county better. So, just in the four years you've been on council, we had the 36 and Hadley Interchange that got opened, was first interchange in Oakdale, I think that's turned out really well. More recently, County 13, which is Ideal Avenue, Olson Lake Road, that turned into a county road was revamped to support the Willowbrook. Highway 5 turned into County 14, there's a new entrance, maybe it's exit, that'll support the forefront. And then the goal line and all the station planning, those are significant items. So, to recognize that and just your good work as you work on council, it makes the city better and naturally the county better. So, I've got a Commissioner Award for you, service award. It says, "On behalf of a grateful county, the undersigned Commissioner hereby extends recognition and appreciation to Oakdale City Council Member, Kline Sweetberg, who served from 2018 to 2022 for a total of four years of outstanding service in the support of Washington County's mission," signs Stan Karwoski, County Commissioner. I dated it January 1st, 2023, as you complete your term. I'm going to give you this one, and maybe we, after the next one, get some pictures.
Yeah, okay.
This one's a little bit tougher. Mayor Ranky, I'm going to call you Paul. We go back a long time, I think you entered council in 2004, and I was there at 2002. You're three terms, we were both mayors, and then your outstanding work as mayor in the last six years. I think of you as really a friend along the way, but a lot has been accomplished. I mean, I was thinking back, again, I'm going to try to keep it just to county highlights, where probably two-thirds of the city has been developed or redeveloped on your watch. Also, your leadership and transitioning from an old, we were younger people, but we were a very stable council that not had changed to one that changed a little bit for me, but really changed for you. So, your leadership to kind of guide new outstanding councilors has been really tremendous. You're totally respected in this region. So, again, I'm going to mention just some county things, starting out with probably Red Oak Preserve, which was a county collaboration with the city up on 50th Street, which was a manufactured home park to refresh people's, it was completely, all the infrastructure was bad, and that has everything from habit, habitat for humanity homes to some affordable housing, multifamily to market rate, single family. The, again, 36 and Hadley Interchange, a lot of challenging work to keep the cost down and make it the right project that you wanted. Again, the recent County 13 and 14, which is supporting forefront and Willowbrook, and that's going to be an amazing development that'll carry on. The goal line is the amazing one, because you go back from the beginning, countless hours, a lot of meetings with me, the county. It's almost too hard to imagine, those are just some of the things that I'm sure I missed a lot. But again, your outstanding work to make the city a good city, and when this is a good city, the county's better. So, maybe you can come down, or yours, or both of you, if you want to say a few things. If I didn't come up and brag about your good deeds, I don't think either of you would, so you had to put up with it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's just do pictures.
One, two, three, one.
Thank you. Hey, I forgot to read this.
It's too late now.
No, I got that right. So, this one reads, "On behalf of a grateful county, the undersigned Commissioner hereby extends recognition and appreciation to all Ranky, who served as Oakdale City Council Member for 12 years from 2004 to 2015. Mr. Ranky also served as Oakdale Mayor for six years from 2016 until 2022, for a combined total of 18 years of outstanding service in the support of Washington County's mission."
Thank you very much. For me, I think it's more fun to hand them out than it is to receive them.
Commissioner, thank you again.
Thanks, Dan.
Good evening.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to comment or share anything about this time during open forum? Seeing nothing, I'm going to move to the consensus motions. So, in front of us tonight, we have A through H, except for C. So, upon review, councilors, were there anything that, any items that you wanted to remove? Grab a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve consensus motions A through H, with the exception of C, as presented.
So, is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then the motion passes as presented, thank you. Next up on the docket is time that we have a chance for the councilors to talk about the advisory boards and commissions that were liaisons to. So, we have several of them, really, we have five main commissions, the Economic Development Commission. In this case, Councilmember Olson is the liaison, there was no meeting. The second one was the Environmental Management Commission, Councilmember Zabel is the liaison, and there was a meeting on the 21st.
Yep, they met last night, a bulk of their work was reviewing their 2023 work plan. So, it'll be a very busy year for that group. They are giving special focus to opportunities that are coming by way of increased federal funding, whether it's through the Inflation Reduction Act or the infrastructure bill that passed us last year, and how those monies can go towards clean energy-type projects. So, city staff will be working on that, figuring out how we can communicate that information to our residents, and the EMC will be a big conduit for that work, so that's about it.
Good deal. Thank you. The other one is, or the next one is the Planning Commission, Councilmember Swedberg is the liaison to that group, and there was no meeting. The next one is the Parks and Recreation Commission, Councilmember Ingberdson is the liaison, I think there was a meeting on the 15th. Jake, anything?
Yeah, just parks updates, ball field cleanup, Walton Fields, the electrician, big thing, electrician called unexpectedly to say, hey, we're here to fix the electricity, and the ball fields 5 through 8.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, there'd been some delays. So, I'm not sure, but by now it may be taken care of, so if not, it should be very soon. That was really the big thing, and then just a lot of relatively mundane updates. But it was really, the main, the main part of the meeting was just updates, fall updates, so.
Very good, thank you. The Tree Board is the next group, and I'm the liaison to that organization, we did not have a meeting. So, the next topic is the Ward of Bids, we have none tonight, then we move into the staff reports. I'm going to look over to City Attorney, Mr. Thompson, good evening.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, nothing specific to report, but happy to answer questions.
Councilors, anything for Jim? Very good, thank you, Jim. Then we're going to switch to our city administrator, Ms. Volkers, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council, I do not have a report, but I am glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilors, anything for Chris? Very good. We're going to kick into the council presentations, I think I'll start on my right, Mr. Ingberdson.
Nothing.
Councilmember Olson.
Nothing for me.
Councilmember Swedberg.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Councilmember Zabel.
Nothing.
Let me, let me say a couple things about the upcoming for the city, and really the first is to thank our local residents or our Oakdale residents for their support for both the city questions on Election Day. This was for the local area, local option sales tax. So, truly thank you for everyone who voted and made their voice heard on this very, very important community decision. It will allow us to move forward on the Public Works Building and the expansion renovation to the Police Department facilities. Also, the indoor market at the Discovery Center is going to be held this Saturday, November 26, from 9 to 1 p.m. And this is the perfect place for holiday shopping with over 20 local vendors, offering just a really unique variety of items. So, again, this is a Saturday, November 26, up at the Discovery Center from 9 till 1 p.m. Then on Thursday, December 8, Santa's going to be visiting on the decorated fire truck. This is beginning at 6 p.m. up at the North Fire Station, and he'll be at a number of stops along Hadley Avenue, ending at City Hall. The schedule of stops is available on the city's website, and children are encouraged to bundle up for this free event and have opportunities for photos with Santa. This is a tradition, gosh, we stretch in five years, possibly, something like that?
Yeah, at least.
It's pretty cool, it's very cool. So, again, that's on December 8. Then on December 17, Saturday, we have the Winter Wonderland coming up. This also is up at the Discovery Center, it's from 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. This is a free event in partnership with the Oakdale Area Chamber of Commerce, and provides a variety of winter activities for the whole family. Activities include the hay draw, or horse-drawn hayrides, a petting zoo, bonfire with smores, a visit with Santa, face painting, and more. So, that's Saturday, December 17, from 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. at Discovery Center. And then finally, on behalf of the city council and all the staff of the city, I wish to, I want, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving this Thursday. So, thank you. Finishing up this meeting, we have the claims. And so in front of us, we have the list of claims, a summary of claims, from the dates, November 8, 2022, through November 22, 2022. Upon review, councilors, were there any that you'd like to poll or ask questions about? Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve claims as presented.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then the claims are approved as presented, thank you. Do we really adjourn versus just moving into the economic development?
You do adjourn the regular meeting and then restart the Economic Development Authority meeting.
Okay, so can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'm moved.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then this city council meeting is adjourned. I will now move to open the Oakdale Economic Development Authority meeting, this is a special meeting, November 22, 2022. Sarah, would you do roll call, please?
Councilmember Ingberdson.
Would it be?
Commissioner.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm, that is on me, I did not tell Sarah, commissioners, and then?
President.
President, yeah, that's good enough, for purposes of roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Ingberdson.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioners Swedberg.
Here.
Commissioners Zabel.
Here.
President Ranky.
Here. Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us, could I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then the agenda is approved as presented. First item is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was September 27, 2022. Upon review, were there any changes or adjustments that you'd like to see? Could I have a motion, then, please?
So moved.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then the meeting minutes are approved as presented. The matter of business in front of us tonight is the approval of a temporary property use agreement with Ames Construction relating to EDA-owned property at Tanner's Lake. In front of us, we have the action. Chris, are you going to do this, or Andy, or?
I, I am going to start it, and I'm going to have Andy come up, thank you, Mr. President Commissioners. This agreement in front of you is to, is under a new policy that you recently approved for the Tanner's Lake property and some rental during, you know, the construction of the goal line. There is one change to the agreement that I did send to you, there has been a changed, change, and it was original typo. And Andy, if you could explain that, that'd be great, with the two-year thing versus one year. And then anything else you'd like to add, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President Commissioners. So, the one change was actually in a draft version that I believe was sent to you. The request for EDA action does list what's in the agreement accordingly. There is a timing on what improvements would be done versus how long the agreement would last. So, I'll read what's in the package just to, just to clarify. So, basically, if the contract is for a year, it can be renewed for another year. If, for any reason, like redevelopment, because we're actively marking this redevelopment within that year period, we want them to vacate, they will vacate, they'll leave the fence in place, and they will restore the site to the condition it was previously. Now, if it goes the full year, they then will, and we don't renew, they will vacate the site, leave the fence, but also do some site restoration work, like potentially grading, removing the surface out there. And then the third part, which was, I think, is the, where there was some confusion in the other version, was if the agreement goes the full two years, so renewed the full two years till November of 2024, then they would replace the, move the sewer pipe to get that set up for, for future redevelopment. But that would only be if it goes two years, that's how long they intend to, that's how long they intend to use that site, and that's a pretty substantial amount of, amount of work on their end, too. I think that was really the, the big one that jumped out, I could be happy to answer any other questions on the, on the agreement. And the Meisinger one has been terminated, and they're, they're off of the site, too, just for awareness.
Thank you, Andy. Councilors, any questions for Andy? None, thank you very much. Commissioners, could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
No. Oh, no, we have to.
Oh, my God. Kevin, go ahead.
We have to approve the motion.
We haven't voted yet, I'm sorry. Do you want me to do it, Kevin?
No, I got it, you're good, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve a temporary property use agreement between Ames Construction and the Oakdale Economic Development Authority for the EDA-owned property at Tanner's Lake, along with authorizing the EDA president and executive director to sign the agreement on behalf of the EDA.
So, there is a motion.
And I'll second it.
There's a second, too. Any discussion, councilors, or commissioners? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then the motion passes as presented. Thank you. Now.
Now.
Sir?
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
There's a motion, is there a second? There's a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and good night.